I, I, yeah, probably. But I haven't had enough time to look at it.
Like if you can just cut down on it, you know, and stop throwing a lot of stuff and just see how it came. You know.
Yeah.
Tried to take into account that some things might be your power of but. Suppose if they take the picture.
Right.
Just take your phone out and take a picture kind of thing.
But we'll get verified somehow.
They can stop, they can give us some, something to talk about.
All ready for Saturday?
Yes, I think so.
On this, we get current percentage of what they pay. Is that biweekly or is that every week as well? Or is that for the month? That's month, okay.
I got so many here.
Maybe it's water.
I wonder if it had been used for a while during the bathroom.
We use it all the time. The women's. You just drain a water heater.
Yeah, but it wasn't two weeks ago.
I just used it earlier.
It smells really bad. I just washed, I mean, all I did was.
Yeah, I know. It's, I, I smell it like that sometimes.
Yeah, it's kind of like.
So percentage, it just says what we're paying right now. Yeah, this year paper.
It's about percentage.
It's about eight percent where we're at right now.
Maybe you smell that rat or that mouse. I had a mouse in my drawer.
Really?
He ate my cough drops.
Did he die?
I don't know. Took the wrapper off, ate my cough, cough drops. And I had a sucker and he unwrapped it, took the stem off of it, but he didn't eat that.
He's smart.
What was the surprise today? That was my snack, snack drawer.
It was quick.
I got six clocks.
The legislature is to declare of the United States of America, the United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, one liberty and justice for all.
Charlie Caldwell. Thank you, Brian.
Here.
Mary Jackson.
Here.
Justin Getchel.
Here.
You, Stephen.
Yep.
And myself, Tim. Anybody had a chance to read other minutes from, uh, November tenth, seventeenth, and the executive session? So if somebody, um, wishes to approve or change or whatever, whatever. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November tenth, November seventeenth, between the special executive sessions. That's the main motion to approve all three.
I'm second.
Second. Thank you, Mary second, all favor. I, both. Jim, I got you again.
Yeah, you've been seeing more of me lately than I have in a long time. And there's, there's good reason for that. The county's doing something to pull up the town of Dillsborough, I think it's really important to, you know what it is and you understand it. So, uh, what's happened since the last time I talked to you was that we met with the planning board, county's planning board. The reason we met with the county's planning board was that they would certify that what we intend to do with the Dillsborough does not violate the county's comprehensive plan. Uh, so we talked about a lot of things that that made. Uh, very little of it had to do with the county's comprehensive plan, which people asked for questions. There were, uh, four people signed up to speak. And after we answered all the questions of the planning board, three of them decided they didn't need to speak. The fourth was Tim Mann. He did a really good job of representing Dillsborough. Appreciate it. What's coming up next? Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I'll be before the county commissioners, the same thing. This is going to happen tomorrow. Uh, if, if there's nobody there from Dillsborough, it's just fine. Then on the eighth of December, that's the final, that's a public meeting. The public meeting is where anybody is welcome to come in and say what they think about what the county's planning to do. It's really important that Dillsborough speaks at that, at that meeting. The, uh, the vote from the planning board was unanimous to approve. You may have seen on, on, in, in the, uh, on the, on your computer, people talking about this tip. And, uh, a lot of it's not very accurate. Uh, some of it is. And it's really difficult for people to read that to know what's right and what's not right. So the only other thing I'd like to do is just ask you, if you have questions, trouble you, uh, I, I'm, I'm here to answer your questions. So let me just ask right now, if, if there is someone who, who has some doubts or has seen some doubts that they want clarified, I'd be glad to talk about this. If not, I'm going to go home and have dinner. Thanks for giving me some time here.
Yeah.
It's, it's important to me that people notice mine as well.
Is the meeting at four thirty or five?
Sorry, well, the meeting at, uh.
Cause I see one place said four thirty and one place said five.
The meeting of the eighth will be at five o'clock.
Five, okay.
Yeah. There's going to be an executive session before that that lasts an hour. Uh, and the first thing that'll, uh, first thing that'll happen after we open that meeting is the public meeting. From what's been going on and the talk around the county, uh, we really expect to see people there, hopefully it's not like when we did Bright. Uh, that was shoulder to shoulder in, in the meeting room and shoulder to shoulder that night at Bright. Uh, I hope this is not quite that controversial. Thanks for, thanks for allowing me some time.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. For pressures report.
Okay. I have a sewer adjustment for Tracy Ashcraft, one zero zero six O Malford Street for ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Her usual leak was nine thousand one hundred ten gallons and it was an outside water faucet leak. So. Derek had seen it, or well, the guys turned it off for her because she couldn't get it turned off. So it took a little while for, for when she noticed it to get it turned off. So.
What was that amount of money?
Ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
We have a motion to approve the sewer adjustment from Malford Street. For ninety-nine thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustment. Who was it, Tracy?
Tracy Ashcraft.
Tracy Ashcraft for ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thank you, made a motion, you have a second? Awesome. Charlie second, all favor. Okay.
Okay, also, you guys got a, I made a copy of the Dillsborough Volunteer Fire Department's annual Christmas party is Saturday, December thirteenth at five P M. At the Dillsborough Civic Club. They usually buy this to it, so I've gone before. So if you're going to, if you're planning on going, just let me know so I can at least tell Jason, um, that how much he's going, he appreciated when I called him last year. Um, also, we've got a copy of the twenty twenty sixteen dues for one thousand five hundred and six dollars. And now if you want to make a motion to pay this, I mean, it's worth it, and does a lot for us educational wise. Do we have any problems?
That, is that, is that budgeting already in there?
I think we have a, uh, membership.
Membership training.
You have, anybody having a motion to approve that aim of yours?
I'll make a motion to approve fifteen fifty-six to, for the twenty-six same dues.
Thank you, made a motion.
I'll take it.
Jerry second, all in favor? Uh-huh. Both.
I think that's all I got.
My department's not here.
Um.
Just, just.
Jason, just to let you know, I, I text Jason because of the time the date changed and he said that this is the regular meeting night, so he wouldn't be here. I told him I left council now.
Please, partner, Josh.
Um, you know, I got that, uh, radar sign, got on, I thought it was just a battery and I pulled it. I don't think it's just a battery and then some waiting for the guys to get some free time, more just trying to take down and go prepare for that, so. They, uh, short-staffed for a couple of weeks, more on vacation. I got more, so I'll try to work with them and get it down so we can get that fixed.
Okay, thank you. Education, Jerry? Uh, they are working on getting the pots ready for Christmas. They worked on it Sunday, they'll be working on wrestling. And then education wants to thank the Sons of American Legion, who are plenty of those stemming soldiers. Thank you. My partner, Tony.
Hi, sorry. Um, not a lot to report, but Park Board's next big project will be where we put the pickleball courts in the, in the community park. Uh, that engineering plan was drawn up and originally included basketball and some other things too, but the grant came in and not.
Yeah.
Well, we know what it was going to be, so that's where we're going. Real excited about things that are happening here.
I think it was, I think it was the news.
Uh, any questions on Park Board here? You guys want to, each one take one of those?
All right.
And I'll switch hats.
Switch on your art set.
I don't know how much you know about our history, I'm going to do this quickly and hopefully painlessly. So we're in our, we'll be beginning our ninth year. Actually, we all have already begun our ninth year. Over those years, first of all, our mission, our mission is to support artists and art locally and also bring in the best that we can find for our local town. And we've been doing that for eight years. Uh, over that time, we've had over eleven thousand visitors, artists, concert goers, workshop participants and students that were part of what we did. We've had, we've given out fifty-six thousand dollars to artists in sales and stipends and performance fees and awards in some of our shows. Uh, we've got over three thousand volunteer hours of a value of about seventy thousand dollars. Over those eight years, money that's crossed through us has amounted to about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and about a hundred thousand dollars of that, um, it was in capital building and equipment complex. So we're really proud of, of, of things that are happening, what's going on there. Uh, as far as twenty twenty-five, I, this is all outlined on the handout that I gave you, so you can read that later in the lecture. In twenty twenty-five, we were really excited, we got a grant from the Indiana Arts Commission, actually we got two in the last two years. The first one was called the Creative Convergence Grant. We were invited, we didn't go looking for this, we were invited because of the things that were happening that we were doing in Dillsborough to a special, uh, convergence, creative convergence conference, uh, April two years ago. It'll be two, two years this coming April. At the end of that conference, they said, here, we're going to give you ten thousand dollars. Make something happen. That the whole idea of the conference was how is your organization and your community working together? How, how does Dillsborough Arts and the town council and everybody else work together? And so we took that money and we did some rehab. Uh, we came up with a place called the Creator Space, it's in our building. Uh, and then we came, went back to the Indiana Arts Commission last year and I said, we need four thousand dollars. And they have a program called the, uh, uh, projects, the arts projects grants. And we got four thousand dollars to do some public workshops. So over the last fourteen months, we did about fourteen artist workshops. We paid the artists, which is what we're about, we want to support local artists. We provide these to the public for free. Uh, we're going to continue to do those, we're not sure we're going to always provide them for free. We got one of our, uh, survey items when we, when people took these workshops was how much we could pay for this. So we're getting an idea of what we did. So while we had, um, we had drawing, play, we had pastels, we had watercolor, huge glass, we had a cricket die cutting class. We had trimming and collage photography. And then one day we had two hundred and sixty kids in the parking lot drawing on the, with chalk on, on our lot. Um, that was pretty cool, that was right before the, uh, the Homecoming Festival last year. Uh, those were very well attended, uh, we're, I think we're about, uh, right about two-ten, I think the people took it, took part in those uh, along with the fourteen artists. And we're excited to look at the, the next couple of years and continue that. We, our, our big event is the Dillsborough Jazz. Uh, Jazz twenty-six will be in June this year. Uh, but we usually get about two hundred and fifty to three hundred people, uh, from all over the, the tri-state area. Uh, we did a lot of advertising. Last year, about a hundred and fifty diehard jazz fans sat under their umbrellas and, and paid attention to these world-class artists that we bring in. Now, like I said, our purpose is twofold. Number one, to support our local art people and our art patrons, and number two, to bring the best we can to the town of Dillsborough. That's all of our purpose together is to make sure that people know what we do here. So somebody somewhere is always saying, hey, I wonder what's going on in Dillsborough? Because that's important. Starting then, it's going to be happening this Saturday too, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's the biggest thing I can ever say. None is possible without the support of the town of Dillsborough and some forward-looking people in town eight years ago that said, hey, why don't you do something with your art? And I said, well, the building is empty over there. And I got, I got hooked into it, this is my retirement gig, I retired, retired that next place, so this is where I came in. Any questions about that? Always happy to talk to you and answer questions.
Thank you, do a good job. Bring people into town.
Thank you very much. We're opening a new exhibition, uh, next Friday, Friday the twelfth. Go over and, uh, have some hors d'oeuvres and wine and say some, see some great art. Uh, I'll tune my horn, this time it's Rebecca and myself. About once a year, we try to get to, back to who we were. Yeah, she's got some new work and I've got some new works that we're going to try that. Thank you very much, I appreciate them.
Main Street, Kenny.
All right, so we have about forty-nine vendors this year in the school gym. Yeah, I'm pretty excited about that, it brought in a lot of extra money for us to be able to keep this going and continue doing what we like to do, which is a kid-friendly event. The class trees are put up, um, and the nativity scene is on the green space. Uh, we'd like to thank Jay and Melissa Lawson and Nicole and Kurt Moore for putting that up Friday. Um, we're just all getting ready for hometown Christmas, just finalizing things and getting down to the last minute details. Um, we would like to have Joshua Alice's help Saturday for the landed vehicle parade. Uh, I know in years past, they've kind of guided through for us, so if that's okay with council, if, uh, Joshua Alice helps and.
One of us will be there.
I did send you a little route, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of us will be there.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
Have, have we got anything, Kenny?
Where did we bring the cookies in there? Um, by Friday by four.
Here or?
I can pick up if it's easier. Or here, or I can pick up, okay.
Legal, John?
Uh, I don't have a lot to say that won't be taken up right away by, by Derek. I do want to say that Andy Botten, this is the county attorney, they get in touch with me to underline what Jim was saying. That, uh, they'd like as much support as they can get, presuming the board does support them on the tip agreement and hoping that somebody would come, uh, at least for the, uh, meeting. The other thing is, I, uh, based on what we talked about last month, I just took a hand at, at throwing some things together for the purpose of at least, uh, discussion possible, uh, we talked about maybe having a form that people fill out when they need a leak adjustment, right? And so I took a shot at that, what that might look like, there may be more information than is needed, but I messed around with it when we did that. And then I also took a look at coming up with a policy, I did not try to convert that, uh, trying to just get down what you all specifically said you might want. Um, and I just, uh, I put that together. Um, and this could obviously be converted into an ordinance for sure. So, uh, just for the purpose of, of, um, discussion right now, uh, we already have in place exactly how Rita, I guess, figures the adjustments, a prior six-month usage versus what you have there. And I don't, I'm not saying that should be changed or that it has to be at all, but I refer to it in here. This is how we're going to calculate it, based on whatever our ordinance says.
Yeah.
Um, I did, uh, try to leave some room here and maybe I need that a bit more, but I do think that the council needs to have some, um, some discretion in cases where we just feel like negligence or, or maybe even intentional acts maybe, uh, contributed to what had, what went on. And also, you'll note at the bottom of the leak, uh, adjustment request form, I have them understanding that, that, you know, that by signing this, they understand that we're, we're going to come by and confirm it and that they have to cooperate with us to do that. And that we kind of dishonestly, uh, you might leave, uh, obviously to that, uh, not being agreed, but maybe future ones we looked at in a little different fashion. It may not be all you need, it may be more than what you want, but I thought it would get the conversation started. And so that's what I did. I don't know of any other thing I have, I would say just on that, um, a case with, uh, D A U, as far as I know, that's still going forward as scheduled. I think there's a really good chance that will be held in Ohio County rather than Dearborn County. I mean, they're still wrangling around about courthouse and rugs, when I understand rugs are a big issue. You know, we're going to try to straighten the rugs out.
May go boredom.
Well, something may need to be done because there's some disputing going on. But, uh, if they get the flooring, uh, to satisfy the various people involved, it may be there and I'll try to keep an eye on that. And if it gets, if that's what it's going to be, I'll try to, you know, give you an update on that later on in the month.
Date has not changed.
The date has not changed as of, uh.
What was that date? That's January, right?
Yeah. And it was like, I, I think it was right off the bat, uh, as I recall.
I'm thinking it's the sixth, but I'm not.
I'm speaking of the sixth or the eighth, yeah, one of the two.
I'll double check it real quick while you guys are talking.
So on this form.
Yes, ma'am.
On the back here. Longer statement, contract statement or written statement of the customer. So the customer, like my husband, he fix stuff. But it could be his description of it, it doesn't need to be a contractor.
That's why I put that in.
Okay.
Jerry, I thought that.
Cause some guys are handy and can fix stuff like that.
Even I can fix some, some.
Yeah, you know, if it's something big, you know, that's a whole.
To me, I thought a, a written statement, maybe pull your cell phone out and take a picture.
Right.
And then our guy comes by and says, yep, looks good to me, should be okay.
Okay.
It may not be as clear as it needs to be, but that's what my intention.
Okay.
By the way, on the requirements for adjustment, paragraph A on the front says proof repair including invoice from plumber or contractor where incurred. And then it says written statement from plumber contract or from the customer or self-repair.
Okay.
So I'm trying to address that.
Yeah.
You know, cause I think there's a lot of guys around here putting handy and maybe they'll fix their own thing.
Take, take action on this, or. Let's, let's groups. Is this one?
I don't have all the time, make an invention to approve it, everything else is okay with it.
Thank you, made a motion to approve the form for sewer adjustments. Yeah, somebody make a second. I'll second. That's the main second, all in favor?
Uh, you guys are fair with that sixty days. Still not a question on.
I had some question marks there, but looking for guidance from you, Derek, from you, the board, from others. I just thought we need a time period, you can't just go on forever. Now, on, on the other hand, I understand there's some underwater leaks that occur sometimes, but surely the volume would be apparent after, would that be two cycles or just, are they rebuilding every month?
Yeah.
After two cycles, sure, that would be apparent to, to the customer. Hey, we're paying a lot more money.
Yeah.
I did give the board some discretion here too.
Tracy's.
Yeah.
Sixty, sixty. Derek, good. Most highlights stuff here that I'll have on the agenda. Um, the, the garage, the new, what about forty emergency service garage is near completion. Um, it's insulated. Everything's completed inside. We, the wa- electric wires are run, but the boxes and stuff ain't hooked up yet. Um, and then the furnace still needs installed, so I'm hoping that can be done this week. Um, and then later on, um, I've been, I got a leasing agreement on here with the Vern's uh Aurora Emergency Rescue. Um, so I'll talk about that a little bit, but um, as long as we get kind of a last little bit of stuff, then I should be able to wrap it up this week. Um, and then aside from that, I've also got some of our, some notes here on our road projects, but I did just want to mention um, what you see is not final product. Um, it's kind of sealing everything up the best we can get everything, kind of getting it ready for the winter. Um, so come the spring, they're actually, we're gonna grind off another inch and a half of Gaion Street, and then they're gonna put a surface coat. Um, and then they're actually gonna be building up a lot on kind of the north side of Lenover Street. So there might be a little bit of um, huddling here, kind of until they get to that point. Um, so let's have to keep an eye on it, but all things considered, I'm, I'm happy with where we're at. Uh, kind of same thing with Western Row. We've got everything finally patched up today. Um, and then come, come the spring, it'll come back, melt down a little bit and build back up. And then we haven't even touched uh Main Street yet. We kind of decided just to kind of let that go until the spring too. So just, there's just a little bit of, a few more holes on Gaion Street. They're gonna try to get back here this week, just get this filled in with asphalt, but keep in mind, it's not, not a bunch part of it, you know? And then aside from that, there's been, our redevelopment commission's been busy. We've got some kind of informal interest at some of our buildings, um, potentially on Lenover Street. Jay Noel mentioned someone that's interested in the property on North Street. Um, one-two-nine-one-six old shoe shop. I probably should have stuck that on the agenda. But I haven't had any formal conversations with anyone as far as what that might be. Um, I don't know if you all have had thoughts on what we want to do with that? If we want to try to transfer that to the redevelopment commission, or if we want to.
So the people that are looking for it, what are they looking at? What are they?
What Jade mentioned to me was that maybe basically everything we were asking for in that, that they were in the commercial on first floor apartments on second. Uh, I don't know that they were proposing to run or operate a business in there. I think they were gonna renovate it and kind of have employees. But it was, I mean, it was a statement in an email. Haven't, I've never even felt another person's name, haven't talked to them. It was just Jay saying, hey, I got someone I'm looking for.
Maybe we need to wait till we hear a little more about it.
Right.
About that. Decide what we want to do there.
I mean, no matter what we do, there's, there's a, a process for how we can go about it, so. I'll just kind of give you guys updated on that. I think that's all. And then I did want to mention too, um, we're planning a, like a Christmas lunch for employees on Friday, December nineteenth. Um, yeah, news, you all are welcome to go if you're, if you're available then. No questions? I'm kind of used to the operational side of stuff. Um, I'm moving into the whole business. So the first one, I got um, the salary ordinance and health insurance renewal. I kind of have them both here together. I got, I got a copy of the salary ordinance. Um, everything's kind of as we discussed. Um, the boys, kind of that cost adjustment with the arrangements. Everything's stayed the same there. Other employees have a three percent increase. Um, and then the goalie thing kind of left blank and substantially changed the health insurance benefit. Um, I ran into some issues with the way our previous or current plan, I should say, is set up for health insurances. Um, you know, they, they, they do a composite. They assess the risk of our entire employees that are beneficiaries of the plan. And then they put a price on the single plan, employee spouse, employee with children, and family plan. Um, this other plan we're looking at with United Healthcare, it's, it's different. It's, it's a, um, it's more of an age-based thing. Um, so it wasn't as easy just to say, you know, your single plan, plan that costs this, family plan costs this. Um, my understanding is you can't really, you can't do discrimination based off age, horrible care. Uh, my founder is like a, a ratio that establishes how, you know, a lot of national healthcare in other municipalities. Basically, price the plan for the employees when they have a plan similar to ours where it's, you know, a single plan's like your one-point-oh, your employee with children's, you know, one-point-six. So it's, you know, sixty percent more premium that you would, you know, charge for the single plan, you know, for another employee. Uh, employee in spouse, one-point-eight, and families, two-point-four. So it's a really complicated thing, so it's the best way that I can come about um, staying within you know, to kind of give you a fair way. Um, I've also provided this sheet. So this has our current plan on the left, and then this uh alternate United Healthcare plan we're looking at on the right with the co-pays. Um, on the backside of this, I'll show if we got the head flipped over. But the, the first column there, that's the total level premiums. Second is our current employee contributions. The third is our employer contributions. Again, that's if we just kept everything the same and then kind of rolled that over into twenty-twenty-six. So that total plan cost is two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Uh, the town's portion of that. Um, including the, the HSA portion is two-hundred-seventeen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. The United Healthcare plan, that's two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, so we haven't talked about, you know, what portion the employees want to pay. I also have another one here that breaks down. Breaks down the, the eight, nine, and ten percent. We discussed.
Here, you want mine?
Did you show it? Okay, maybe I just didn't make a copy for myself. You guys have the one that shows the breakdown?
Is that this one?
Yes, yes.
Do you want to use one?
I, I, I got one. So this, this shows, you know, if we did a, eight, if the employees paid eight percent, percent of the.
I think I have two there. Maybe that's why. And look exactly the same.
So this, again, this shows the eight percent, nine percent, ten percent. That shows that kind of multiplier there on the left. We don't have any, anyone currently enrolled in a single plan. We have one employee child, four employees spouse, and three um, in the family plan. And then you can see kind of down there about the middle page, it says the total annual share. So again, that's that two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollar total. If the employees are paying eight percent, the town shares two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. Employees are paying nine percent, town shares two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. It's ten percent, the towns paying two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. Um, and then below that, I also provide kind of what, on a per-pay period scale, this is what the employees would be responsible. So the current, you know, the single plans, you know, we're paying thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per pay period. That eight percent of the new plan would be forty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Like I said, it doesn't, doesn't increase them all equally. Just because of the way that the, the plan was structured, and I couldn't figure out a fairer way to go about that so that, you know, every employee saw, you know, the same increase, decrease, unfortunately, just based on plan type. And the best thing I could do was um, kind of, what I saw as national standards as far as that ratio. Um, but if we did the eight percent, I mean, most of our employees' pay period share is gonna stay about the same. Um, and that, and then that has, you know, the town's responsibility at two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand for the year. And that's uh, that's just a little bit, about less than a thousand dollars more than that two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand that we're going, that that was paid otherwise. Uh, if you brought the employee share up to nine percent, that brings your share down to two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand and change, and that would actually be less than what you would've paid otherwise. I think we just, at this point, I would just kind of defer to what you guys want to do. As far as how we fill in those kind of blanks on the salary ordinance, because we, I left the percentage blank, the employee's premium contribution of blank percent, so it'll be applied to these standardized rates. Um, and then I also left a blank at what the employees are gonna pay per pay period based off that percentage.
So is this figured on the current or on the United Healthcare?
This is figured on the United Healthcare.
This is the United Healthcare.
Yes. Yeah, the current would be on this sheet.
This one, okay.
Yeah. The back one. That's the first three columns.
Okay, so this whole thing is, okay, why?
Now, fourth, the fourth column is United Healthcare.
Okay.
But that's just the, the total, that's the same as the first column.
Okay.
But with a separate plan. I just didn't, didn't have the breakdown because I, I don't know what we're gonna do yet.
Okay. So it's basically about the same.
Right, the, the total.
Two-thirty-seven dollars is two-thirty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's about eleven hundred dollar, maybe twelve hundred dollar difference in total claim costs.
Did you talk to the employees? Like, what is their preference? I mean, I, me, when I look at it, I think the United Healthcare plan is better just because of the co-pays at your doctor's office and stuff with kids and stuff. I know, what do you?
I've talked to them. I mean, I completely agree. I'd much rather have the co-pays or actually feel like our insurance is paying for something.
Yeah.
I haven't got a ton of feedback from them. I don't think anything, no one was negative. I think everyone's just concerned about premiums and.
What do you think, Josh? You're on the family, right?
So, yeah, um, I'm gonna, what I want to ask, that's my family's situation.
Yeah, but I mean.
We always meet out of pocket, most of them are another, I don't know, so. You know, I know Derek said that he prefers it, so I think the other employees do too, so that's a new one. I mean, worth going to.
This is out-of-pocket deduction for our out-of-pocket maximum for current families, thirteen thousand, the new one's twelve thousand. Because savings, Eric, you still have it, but then we're leaving HSA, so we're actually going to be paying a thousand on that out-of-pocket.
Yeah.
There's a, they do have a two-hundred dollar, I can't remember what they call it. It's, it's similar to HSA. It's only two hundred bucks, so I mean, you're still down eight hundred, if you get that.
Well, I myself, if we go with the United Healthcare, I would like to keep their percentage at eight percent is what I would like to see happen. It's just me though. You know, that's.
I like the United Healthcare plan myself.
I like the United Healthcare plan too, but I mean, like the percentages he has broke down, I would like to keep it at eight percent, not the nine or the ten.
Right, because they're, they're not getting two thousand.
Yeah.
HSA, so.
I, I, when I look at them, I just like United Healthers about the plan. I mean, I really do.
I'm gonna agree with that. The United Healthcare would be eight percent. What's yours, Charlie? I agree the same way. I'll make a motion that I go with the United Healthcare and be eight percent.
I will make a motion that goes with the United Healthcare. Plan for the employees and keep the eight percent employees portion.
Three-day motion, a second?
Second, Ben.
Like you made second, all favor?
I want to do the salary one separately and put a title in. The blank, Tim, I think you're, I do need a copy of it. I can type it in.
Yeah, I got three one, and then I got one to get some stuff marked out here. You got two copies of them.
Uh, there's one where I got the health insurance benefit kind of underlined. I highlight that kind of change. Then there's a clean copy that's not underlined. Uh, but we have fill in that eight percent and then the dollar amounts. If it's easier, I can just type it in and have you guys sign it.
Make a motion that we approve the salary ordinance twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a question about that. On the overtime, it says overtime will be earning employees' work in excess of forty hours. So when people are taking vacation and stuff, we're still paying them overtime. And according to this, it says they have to work forty hours to be paid for overtime. That I, because that's not happening now. I just had a question about that.
That's a good question.
I, I would assume that, I mean, vacation time uses the same as work.
It's not though.
Yeah.
It's saying work forty hours.
John, do you have an opinion on that?
So we're paying overtime? Guess what? I'm not, they're on vacation?
Yes, they're getting, like, if they're on, okay, let's say they took forty hours vacation and then it's, they're on call. They're being paid overtime for their on-call when they're getting vacation pay. And according to this, they should, it's only if you work in excess of forty hours.
Well, I didn't think a look at this before we came in, so I. But uh, the, the language there, it, you know, tracks basically what the languages and the statutes regarding when overtime occurs and when it doesn't.
Well, I kind of agree. I think if you don't work forty hours, you shouldn't be paid overtime.
But if you, if you're, if you're off on Monday for vacation day, then we have a main break on Friday. You have to stay till four hours extra. Do you just, you retain your four hours that you took on Monday? You just get your vacation time back?
What I was gonna say is, is that I think though that, now that it says that, but I also think, as I recall, and I'm thinking back on this, but as I recall, you know, vacation time, sick time, all those kind of things are part of your overall package. And they count just the same as though, you know, you were working. In other words, you earn them over a period of time, but when do you do? And I think there might be case law out there that says that if you you have that benefit, you burn it, you're doing it, you're getting called in, and you're being compensated for forty hours of work. I think it might be available, really. I think that maybe might seem to that.
It's where I work, it's not. If you don't work forty hours, if you take vacation or holiday, you do not get paid overtime on that. I think it's, where I work, it's not, if you don't work forty hours, if you take vacation or holiday, you do not get paid overtime on that week, if it's over forty hours. That's why, I mean, it's fine, I just, you know, the way this reads, you know, and if you consider vacation and holiday and sick work, then that's fine.
You can look into it, I just, like I said, I don't know what would happen in that instance, if you had a planned vacation, then you have to come back in and work.
Yeah.
I don't, I guess, can you get your, I guess, should we get your vacation time back that you used earlier in the week?
Might just be straight time?
That would be good, I think, too, I guess. Maybe getting.
It's only gonna hit a few, because if you're on vacation, you're probably not sitting at home on vacation, you're gone somewhere.
Right. Not.
I seen Matt Bower on vacation, and he came in to work, because it was emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, I just had a question about, I, you know, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah. Yeah, you're saying, I mean, you're kind of taking a little bit away from someone, it's less incentive for them to come in, I guess. We can look at it.
I believe that financial issues really, I mean, I, if somebody's on call, I'm actually on call right now. I mean, we'd have to re, write, have a significant change to the salary ordinance, I think, to, uh, you know, indicate what we're gonna do. It's fairly minimal.
I can't see that it would probably happen that often, but I, you know, I'm, you know.
I'm just gonna go with that, I mean.
Yeah.
Eric, for example, has got a lot of vacation time, he's got a lot saved up, but he's gonna be using a lot in the summer.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's when we typically would have our.
Like.
Our retirement requirements. So, I mean, at, at that instance, Eric needs to.
And you want to say everybody else did, I, you know.
I wasn't like, I didn't really realize it. Because you got our, we got our. One thing said thirty five hours for a full time, and then he's got that overtime for you, so that's, that's the difference in the way, because. If you're already full, if you're full time with thirty five, you'd think thirty five hours.
That's, that's the whole of our benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah. She wouldn't go to the company, she'll have forty.
Sorry.
Table is there, where your table, or, I think it's more pressure, or we, you know, but we gotta fit something, something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't we have to have this here?
Issues with Larry.
Ask John, 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 don't we have to have the salad organs approved by a certain?
Typically, we have to have it approved by the end of the year.
End of the year.
So, looking at the FLSA, just say the pay. Pay leave, vacation sick or holiday pay generally does not count to one of forty hours worked, which is hard overtime.
I do think it does.
It's four hours, they count for, you call in for four hours, that's counted, you, you can count that as four hours worked. Get it to the forty hours for overtime purposes, but it's not forty.
Take your vacation day that week.
When you get called in.
Basically, just get your vacation time back.
Or just get paid regular pay.
Pay them straight time, right? I think there need two options, so if you're gonna change it, then we need to change the salary ordinance, I don't think, now that I look at it, that it would be that hard, you just have to decide what you're gonna do. If you're accounting for the hours, wouldn't it just be better to pay on straight time?
Right.
So that wouldn't be that hard to put in there if that's what you would do.
So does it really change, is this, is it really something we should just? Do differently in payroll?
I mean, if you think about the, the way it's written, it does say for hours worked, and that is that, now, that's not been what you have done in the past. So you're gonna have to communicate that to the employees so they understand, but I guess now that I think about it, it says hours worked, or, and that is what the FLSA says, so maybe it doesn't require a change. But you do have to decide how you want to handle those four hours, do you want to pay straight time, or do you want to? You know, swap them out, running, get four hours of your vacation time back, or could that be harder to keep that up than just to pay them? If you're going that way, I mean, I think the other would be it's just a benefit if you do the other way, you're, you're given a benefit by doing that.
What do you, okay, so, I work thirty two hours and I took eight hours vacation, so I have forty hours, and then I have to come in. Extra five hours, I get to keep that, I just get an extra five hours pay. You know what I'm saying?
Straight time.
Yeah, I just, it just would be paid at time.
You've got thirty two hours for overtime purposes and you need forty to get to overtime.
Correct, correct, so I would just be paid, I mean, you wouldn't have to take vacation back, you would just be paid. Straight time for the hours that you have to come in, if, if you happen to have vacation on that week or whatever.
Do I give the employees the option, if they'd rather just? Because what, I mean, what if you're, I don't know that there's really changes, but what if you're on a, on a vacation day and come in to work? Is it same difference?
You would still get, keep your vacation paid, plus you would get the extra pay.
Right.
Yeah. Right?
It would count.
Or, can you leave that as a seventy forty, because he's coming in after hours away from his family, but still giving the time to have?
Can't.
You guys can.
No, you can't, you can do it.
You can do that as a board.
But you're not required to do it, you can do it as a matter of employment policy, there's been a lot of times I looked at, so I'm sorry, but you can do it as a matter of policy. You choose to.
Okay, I got you.
Well, just all of a sudden came up.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
My opinion is leave the way it is.
And that's fine, I just didn't know, you know, I mean.
Maybe look at it later, you know, in the year, if we're hurting really bad or something, you know.
If it ends up being a major chunk, and we can come back and look at it first year, if it's an issue, we can address it first year. My opinion.
We, we can change that at any point.
Well, maybe we should just watch it this year, you know what I'm saying, then address it next year if it seems to be a lot, yeah, yeah. Is that okay with everyone?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the salary ordinance as it is now. I'll make a motion that we approve of the ordinance twenty twenty five dash twelve dash one for the salary. That's, that's the way it reads currently.
That's the made motion, have a second? Charlie second, all in favor?
Next week, um, we discussed this, I think in our previous meeting, we just had a formal resolution. Um, that's for the Christmas bonus, and we, we put a variety of t-shirts, it was a hundred and fifty dollars. So I, I think, I, my point, you should have a copy of them.
One of those rising Christmas bonus and one of those rising shirts.
What's the number gonna be on that for the bonus?
Okay, which one are you gonna do first?
We need a bonus first.
So it'd be twenty twenty five dash twelve dash two.
These are resolutions though?
All the resolutions.
I don't know that.
Yeah, it says resolution.
Resolution?
Yeah, it says resolution.
Twenty twenty five dash twelve dash one. For the bonus, and then the other one is twenty twenty five dash twelve dash two.
For the shirts?
Yeah.
Shirt is two.
Jim, is, Jim's got the one to sign, right?
I think, yeah.
Because I don't have a copy of it.
Yeah.
So is one want to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five twelve one and twenty twenty five twelve two?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of twenty five dash twelve dash one and resolution twenty five twelve dash two.
Very made motion, have a second minute, I'm sorry, Charlie second, all in favor?
We've already got that, so we're addressing policy, um, I think we're good there. Just have any other old business before we move on. So for the new business, we had a request for reimbursement for water main restoration, um, at ninety three seventy nine State Road. Two sixty two, um, this is property owner turned in some receipts for some materials. Um, he purchased to, um, see if Charles Grass was satisfied with the work that was. Done for that project, that work was done in twenty twenty three. Um, I was not aware of it, but I think with some of the turnover, I gave him the benefit of the doubt, and he probably did speak, um, with, with the. The town official at the time, um, I think that was for two hundred and ninety dollars and change. Bit of a, a odd circumstance, um, but I, but like I. Um, these, these have come up, um, in my time, we try to address them as I do, um, this one, so it just wasn't brought up to me.
Rita, does it, do you have to have receipts for everything, or, or can you go do something like it without?
It's in the minutes, I'm okay.
Oh, is this in the minutes, you're okay with it?
Yeah, what did Derek?
We do have the receipts, the only thing that, that we didn't have a formal receipt on was the Charles, uh, inside was eighty bucks to pay.
That was separate from the two ninety, right?
No.
Oh, that was included, oh.
I don't think that's. Too far off, I guess.
That's what I say, use his equipment and stuff too, I mean, there's fuel and that, and, all right, we won't wear a tire or anything else, just to get it squared back well.
Any discussion on that?
I should approve that, the minus, yeah, I second that, I think we.
A motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a payment of two ninety for the water main restoration at nine three seven nine State Road, two sixty two. My second it.
You made a motion, you're second, all in favor?
Okay.
The next, um, is the sanitary sewer adjustment, this is at one two five five zero North Street, this old shell station. Um, we noticed high consumption, notified them. And the problem kind of fixed itself, they never found a leak, um. We got no indication that the water didn't go down the sewer, but this customer typically uses, you know, twenty, fifty gallons a month. Claims that every time he goes there, he'll turn on the main valve, shuts it off before he leaves, because of bad experiences that's happened in the past. Um, and they claim he's been a good customer for years, which I think's accurate, and it's kind of consistent with his usage. Um, but he had a, a huge spike for that thing of around wide open two hundred gallons an hour. Or about two days, I believe it was, um, so he was. Or asking for an adjustment, um, that's definitely the circumstances, but, you know.
How can that be if you don't have it? I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I'm gonna ask, unless we don't.
There has to be.
Yeah.
There's a little, you know, water meters, that thing won't spin unless water's spinning.
No, that's, I don't, I understand how you cannot, I mean, it just happened, I don't, I, I, that's my.
Stop motion.
Yeah, I just, I know it happened. You know.
Yeah, claimed there's no hose sticker or anything on the outside, I didn't know someone could have hooked that to that and turned it on. I mean, it, it ran through the weekend, it was like the Thursday through Monday, but we pulled it, the data off the water meter.
So statement was that this has happened in the past, or he's had experience with this happening?
At, at a different property, different community.
Okay.
All together. I'm not aware that it, anything's.
I have never seen this before, there's always been evidence.
Yeah, and when we look, I think, so this was in the middle of October, we look back at it as November usage, and it's. After normal, you know, twenty fifty gallon, whatever it was.
What property is this?
The old shell station down across from. Yeah.
And one thing is, if a person has a leak, and you tell them to check their toilets, they'll say, no, I need the toilets. But eventually they'll come back and say, yeah, what's my toilet do, so it's, it's amazing what a toilet will do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was the amount, what was the amount? If there wouldn't be adjustment, what would be, what's going on?
So they use over twenty thousand gallons? Um, we, it, it's a little, probably a little over two hundred bucks. I mean, I, I, I'd probably work with Rita, I guess, if you guys want to consider that as a sewer adjustment, and we go back to this.
Yeah.
Prior, which I guess it would default back to as minimum, in such.
Yeah, six month minimum, what the six month average is, is what I do.
So they didn't have a leak and fix it?
No.
Saying nothing happened.
So he didn't do anything.
See, I just don't know how that could be.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't make sense. Sounds like a leak, you just shut off all the.
That's long.
Mm-hmm, yes, exactly, well, yeah.
That's left in those runners.
I'm, but, I mean, I don't know how you can give them an adjustment on that, I mean, we have the same thing at the Legion. And I paid, just paid a four hundred and eighty dollar water bill, and I don't know what made it do that for the month, but it did.
Right.
But I had to pay it.
Yeah.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, because we checked your meter and everything, that's happened twice.
Wasn't it, it wasn't the water softener?
Well, that's, I didn't know, maybe that's what it was then later, because the claim said, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I mean, we paid it.
Right.
The price that we paid.
Yes.
So he's been pretty persistent, so I'll let him know, I'm bringing us you all. So it was, it is odd, but.
Yeah, that's, it's odd, and it's just quill, so.
Do you know how much the trouble got once?
Um. Do you know how much the water bill was, do you have that?
I don't have a bill, I just have that usage data we pulled off the. Off the meter. Like I said, I know it was, I know it was over twenty thousand gallons that he used.
It was seven hundred.
Ten and a quarter for a thousand.
Thought I printed it out, but.
Should be like. Maybe two hundred and one bucks.
Two hundred and one, yeah.
Yeah.
I say let it go another month, see if it comes back up, I, it's my opinion.
Yes.
The leak, I mean, if there is a leak there, it's not fixed.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and since we got this one now, he's not gonna be able to claim another one, he's not gonna be able to claim another one, that's it.
So which one you want, you, it may be, it may be more next month, and then we'll have reimbursement for this amount, but, no.
That's my opinion. You got Charlie? Something won't seem right, that's true. I say hello.
Yeah, I just don't, I mean.
Yeah.
If you didn't have a leak, how could you use that much?
I know.
Yeah, it don't make sense.
Please just don't fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you really had one and you fixed it, um, should let me say, hey, you did.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I'd be more, I have to give you a, you know.
An adjustment that way than saying, I don't know why, you know.
He claimed he's being honest, he said, I, he said, I could say I fixed something that I didn't fix, he said, that I'm not gonna do that, that I didn't fix.
He wasn't nice to me on the phone.
He wasn't?
Yeah.
Well, I say let's just hold on to that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna head on to say Leon, yeah, sorry about that.
Your phone?
I think someone just might say a motion to deny, I don't see. I'm saying a motion to deny it.
Hi, John, you're welcome.
I'll make a motion that we deny this reimbursement for two hundred dollars for, uh, one. I'll make a motion that we deny this reimbursement for two hundred dollars for, uh, one two five five zero North Street.
I'll second that.
Make a motion, that'd be second in all favor.
Next I have the. North Street, um. So this is the N dot LPA North Street street escaping grant application and financial commitment letter. So we're looking at submitting a grant application for our North Street project, separate from Stellar. Um, if we're able to get it awarded through N dot's regular LPA program. But not only with construction fee reimbursed at eighty percent, but also our engineering fees. Um, surveying fees and all our other project expenses. So I think it's, it's worthwhile, if we're going through the, making this investment, I think it's worthwhile to, to submit this application. We can get more of our, more of our expenses reimbursed. So I do have a copy of. The preliminary cost estimate. That's for our North Street, streetscaping project. Um, it's for a total of one million three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And again, this isn't changing any scope, just simply applying through a different application process. To get more of that reimbursement. That's actually, this, this is due on Friday. Um, there's two things that I, I would need from you all, in addition to just kind of giving, you know, authorization to apply for the grant. But we also have to make that financial commitment letter, and then there's an ADA, um, compliance commitment letter that we'll have to sign. Let me see if I can. Uh, I have copies of it. But I don't have it on our letterhead yet. I still need to figure out how much money we spent on ADA improvements over the past, uh, five years or so. But again, we've just been making twenty percent commitment on that one point three one zero. Um, and then making a commitment to make ADA improvements throughout the project. And then authorizing me to submit this grant application. And then if you guys are all okay with all those three, then once I get, get those documents completed, I'll have Tim sign them this week and. And put them as we.
I'd be happy to, but I'm not sure what I'm, the three things you just said.
So authorize the grant application for the N dot LPA project. Um, make the financial commitment, twenty percent of the project expenses at one point three one million. And then, um, au- authorize or make a commitment to the ADA improvements. Cause that's part of, part of, um, what we're submitting for federal funds, that has to, everything we do has to meet up to ADA standards. So they wanna see, you know, a signed commitment letter through town at the application stage.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the grant application. The twenty percent of the project expenses will be committed to that and to the ADA. Compliance, okay.
So you've made a motion. I'll second.
I'll second.
That's in second, all in favor?
And then, next I have the Aurora emergency rescue lease agreement. Did I gotta copy that? Did you guys get a chance to read that? Um, essentially, it's, it's proposed for them to pay two hundred fifty, fifty dollars per month. Um, for one bay, that new garage, um, that I believe that'll cover all our insurance expenses. Um, it's a month-to-month lease, so they can back out at any point if they ever get another mortgaged building in town. I would assume they would do that. I talked to their, uh, director, David Phelps, he's in agreement with it. I'm sure he still has to, um, present that to his board. But I thought this is, at least present this for you all, you're in their concern, but just look for approval of that lease agreement, but instead of a signed copy.
Have they got any comments on that? Make a motion to. Prove the lease agreement, Aurora emergency rescue.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Aurora emergency rescue.
Jerry made a motion, all in second?
Okay, next I have the, a change order for the Gino Street sidewalks. Um, I sent an email out on this, trying to get you guys a little bit of information. But when we were kind of throughout the early phases of that project, when we were tearing the old sidewalk out. Um, realized there were some old railroad ties kind of stacked up along the sidewalk on the back of the. Uh, old side street station tavern. So we instructed the contractor to go ahead and remove those. They were just letting rock and dirt wash onto the sidewalk. Um, and then we, we wanna just go ahead and build a, a small eighteen inch concrete wall that just kind of tapered down. To the sidewalk, almost like a curb on the backside of the curb. Um, and then here we are now, there, uh, Rose asking for, it's like seventy-five hundred. I think substantially more than it should be, um. Change mine.
Kind of pinching all into it, though, right?
Yeah, we, that and, I mean, we're, we're kind of, we can't legally. Negotiate outside of the contract unless we just kind of let it in.
Unless they sign off on it.
Unless they signed off on it, um, I think, certainly, I, I don't think we'd have a problem keeping it under our grant agreement. So I mean, we're kind of subject to.
They're, they're already behind on their contract bill anyway, aren't they? So they should be able to negotiate with us on something like that.
Right.
Because they're supposed to be done this year.
Technically, it's May first. So I mean, I think they're, I think they're still trying to hit that. We have, we have negotiated or kind of have worked through some savings, I think, for the project. We didn't have to take up quite as much as the aisle on street as we originally thought we were gonna have to. Um, so I still think we're gonna turn, come out on our head, but. I think they're kind of holding their verse a little bit on, on this change order. It's for seven thousand five hundred, two dollars and forty-nine cents, that total. And it's, like I said, they, they gave it a cost justification. They got the labor at two thousand ninety-six dollars, their equipment costs a seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, they got some material at seventy-eight dollars. Their subcontractors at. Four thousand two hundred dollars, um, they added a seven percent markup to that. On top of what their sub did, so they just kind of, they just added some markups kind of along the way. Twelve percent markup on material. Twelve percent markup on equipment, twenty percent on labor, they just act on everything online on. Like I said, it'd be nice to, to get it in, um. While they're still on concrete town and otherwise, I guess it would have to sit like that until we close the project out, you can. Maybe do it later, and I think by the time we, at that point, we're paying for a hundred percent of it. I don't know that there's a substantial amount of saving, there's, I don't look quite crap for a little bit, so I would probably, you know. I'd recommend just going ahead and approving it based off how the, the project's progressing.
I understand the rationale, cause you're gonna pay for mobilization, re-mobilization, if you have to bring equipment back out there again, so I don't like the price, but. You either pay it now or you pay it later.
Right. I got some photos, if you guys want me to show you and describe it.
And I know exactly where you're at. We probably should just pay it. See the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's for the change order, correct?
That's, this is the area, that's what it looks like now, so we just kind of, you can see how the dirt sits up quite a bit higher. And that's what was everywhere, it was just old railroad ties and the dirt and rock coming around it. So essentially where that's at would just be a kind of a concrete curb on the back of it. Very expensive concrete.
Someone wanna make a motion? One way or the other?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, change order for Gino Street, uh, for the curb addition. That's made a motion, what was it, seven thousand five hundred?
About two cents.
Two cents?
Right, that's made a motion, all in second?
I'll second.
Make a second, all in favor?
Just wanted to know, we got our, um, submitted our annual pavement asset management plan in for twenty twenty-six, I'm sure. I don't think I shared that with you. I can send you guys a copy of it. Um, again, it's not, nothing committal on this, it's, it just looks at, um, we didn't even have to do our, raid our streets. We're supposed to do that every other year, um, but really just had to update some, what little work we've done. Um, and then include it, it's kind of like a five-year projection on what we plan on spending on road projects. So I can be sure to send you all a copy of it. So just kind of trying to think of what we might try and do over the next. Five years, kind of within our budget and applying for crossing projects, so. I'll share a copy of this with you all, but I can have it's, nothing committal, wouldn't change it at any point, so not committal to anything. Just a update there, there's no questions on that, the only other thing I have was our twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. If you guys want to change anything, I assume the second Mondays were pretty good, but, but we just confirm actually, you have to notify the paper, we're changing.
Anybody have any discussion about changing anything or just keep everything the same as this, this year it was?
I thought just keep it the same.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna share other questions.
Anybody got anything else?
I have a question. I got like a Christmas tree, a big Christmas tree like we used to have. I really think we need one. That all sounds stupid, but us.
Yeah, they used to have that one at the farmhouse and they cut it down, right? It was a, it was a political.
You know, I just think we need a Christmas tree. I really, right on square.
I do, I know. They had that little tiny one.
Where?
The civic club, that little tiny one they put up. I know what you mean. I've talked about that with Main Street too, the big one. They have a lighting ceremony.
And they have Santa, you know, Santa's just to come and.
Well, we have Santa at the school this Saturday, but, and thank God it's at the school, cause it's supposed to rent.
Yeah.
A lot of people aren't like.
I don't know, I just was curious, cause I, I, you know, and I actually do it by the farmhouse, cause I thought, I thought, oh, the tree's gone, that's why we don't do that.
I forgot about that.
Cause I knew we, I said, well, when my kids were little, that's where we always went to see Santa. You know what I mean?
We go into the green space in north and, and front, that there's some kind of, where you could put a tree in. You know, some, just something built into the pavement or built out of the landscaping there that could actually print a tree in.
Where maybe they have to be trees though, like where?
Usually they donate, somebody donate. Larks, they have artificial ones, and Larkspur just gave their old thirty-five foot one to Myland. My, so that's Myland just had a big thing this past Saturday, yeah. You know, I mean, we might have to have that big one, but I think it'd still be nice.
Two lakes this year, I assume.
I think it probably is, yeah, but I, you know, I would, I really would like to do that next year, you know, I just, yeah. This is a Christmas. I think they have, I, well, I'm assuming, cause they do maybe their thirty-five foot artificial one to Myland, cause they got a fifty foot one, I think.
I guess Aurora's is.
Aurora's is.
Theirs is a lie. Um, for sales is lying.
Oh, really?
Aurora switched to a fake one last year, and they.
I don't know, but where it is, somebody's gonna ram right into that.
Hold off on that till next year.
We probably need to look at that maybe in.
Start scouting out trees then.
Start making deals.
Yeah, well, maybe I can look after our Christmases, you find a real big. I think it'd be neat to have a big Christmas tree, you get decorations.
It wasn't cut last year either, it was the year before. Any frame or restore it.
Someone make, gonna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Somebody made a motion, that's your second?
All second.
Jerry second, all in favor?
Wanna set it up, I asked him to help me.